Just look for a second and ask you the question. How many sins can you find? How many sins can you find that David committed? Around the story of David and Bathsheba. Alright, 2 Samuel chapter 11, 2 Samuel chapter 11. The first one is in verse 1. The first one is in verse 1, can you find the sin? David committed a sin in verse 1. 2 Samuel. 2 Samuel, chapter 11. 2 Samuel, chapter 11. At the time when kings do what? Go off to war, where should David had been? He should have been out leading the troops in battle. The first sin he committed was that he was not where he belonged. A lot of times the sins that we commit are because we're in the wrong place. We're looking at something, we're doing something that we ought not be doing. So be where you belong, you'll be a lot safer. So, um, so that's one of the things. And it set him up for what happens after. Look at verse 2 and following. One evening David gets up from his bed and walked around the roof on the, on the palace. From the roof he saw a woman bathing. Has he sinned yet? No, he has not. The woman was very beautiful and David sent someone to find out about her. Has he sinned yet? Remember this 10 commandments, this coveting kind of word that we talked about? There is something forming in his brain that he needs, or some part of his body, that he needs to, uh, he needs to run away from. He needs to turn and flee. The word of God says that we are to stand up under every temptation except one temptation. And that temptation is a temptation toward sexual sin. And in that place, he says to us, turn and run. Turn and run. David's sin was that he saw this and instead of turning and running, taking his eyes upon, off of this and putting them back on the Lord, he said, ooh la la. And it led him to, I'm doing this Elaine and you're not here yet. So we are at 2 Samuel, chapter 11, and we are in verse 2 and following. David gets up from his bed, walks around on the roof of the palace. From the roof he saw a woman bathing. The woman was very beautiful. David sent someone out to find out about her. The, the man said, isn't this Bathsheba? The daughter of Iliam and the wife of Uriah, the Hittite? David sent messengers to get her. She came to him and he slept with her. So notice the sins that take place before the sin of adultery. The sin of the actual act of having sex with somebody else's wife. He was not where he belonged. And he didn't resist the temptation when it came into his eyes. Then he used his power in a sinful way to take what was not his. And so this coveting formed itself in a matter of stealing. And he stole another man's wife, slept with her. David sent messengers to get her. She came to him and he slept with her. Um, then she went back home. The woman conceived. And sent word to David saying, I'm pregnant. David sent word to Joab, send me Uriah the Hittite. Has he sinned there? He's conceiving something in his brain. Send me Uriah the Hittite. Right? Send me Uriah the Hittite. One of the things that happens when you and I sin, no matter what that sin is, is that it typically, um, is either preceded or afterwards comes a whole series of other sins uh, that, uh, that can be identified. This sin of, uh, David with Bathsheba has all kinds of sins that come before it, but even more that come after it in order for him to hang on to his place and keep secret what he had done. So, uh, go down to your house and wash your feet. So, uh, Uriah left the palace, uh, and a gift from the king was sent after him, but Uriah slept at the entrance to the palace with all of his master servants and did not go down to his house. When David was told that, which let me just explain to you, that is honorable. He is serving his king well. He is, uh, as captain of the army, he is, uh, he is going above and beyond, or at least doing exactly what he should be doing. David was told Uriah did not go home. He asked him, haven't you just come from a distance? Why didn't you go home? Uriah said to David, the ark and Israel and Judah are staying in tents and my master, Joab and my lords men. So they have this conversation. David said to him, stay here one more day and tomorrow I will send you back. So the plot is sticking. And, um, if you turn, well, I have to turn the page. Number, uh, verse 14, 15, or 14 and 15. Somebody want to read that one? Sin? Yeah, yes. And all, all after, in order to cover up and have his desires filled and hold on to his power prestige and place. He goes to these lengths in order to, in order to, uh, preserve uh, his life and his title and his status. And he, uh, because he could not control his lust after Bathsheba, all of this takes place. He ends up having Uriah killed. And then later Nathan will come to him and tell him the story that he tells him. And then end up by saying, you are the man. You are the man, you are guilty. And then David repents of his sin and comes clean before Almighty God. Um, and, uh, and so when we were talking about the commandment, I wanted to be able to, uh, talk to you about this and I mentioned it, but we never came back to it. So let's, uh, let's pray and we'll start class. Your Father, I thank you. Brothers and sisters in Christ, partners in the gospel and friends. And I ask you, dear Lord, that you would build us up in those relationships. We ask you, dear Lord, that you would build the body of Christ in this place. And that you would show us what you have in mind for us. Be with us as we dive into your word and strengthen us with a season of life before us. In your name we pray. Amen. So, um, I, we have now finished the 10 commandments. I wanted to do something really unusual. How's that for you? I know that you find that surprising. I wanted to turn in your catechism to the very front. To the very front and find the table of contents. In your catechism, find the table of contents. And I want to ask you, why do you think Luther put these six chief parts in this order? So what's the first thing that we look at in teaching confirmation? The 10 commandments, right? The 10 commandments, right? And again, the reason he wants to do that with you is to show you the frame of your relationship. Through the three uses of the law. The fact that he loves you and wants this life for you and your life is going to hang together best if you will keep the commandments. And then he also wants to show you your sin and your need for him as your Savior. So that then the Savior is going to mean for you what he's supposed to mean for you. He wants to be able to then, he wants to be able to then, once he has brought you from unbelief to faith, to, uh, share with you, to share with you the guide for your life. The guide for your life. This is what we do because this is who we are, men and women of God. The next thing that he does is that he introduces you to who this God is. To who this God is, it's always been curious to me. Always been curious to me, why Luther didn't put the Apostles Creed first? Let's introduce you to God and then talk about it. But he doesn't, he doesn't. But the next thing he does is that he takes us into who is this God that we worship? Father in the work of creation. Son in the work of redemption. Holy Spirit in the work of sanctification. Who is this God that we worship? Whose image we are created in? Who has redeemed us and made us his? And how do we relate to him? And who are we? Because, because what he does is that he shows you because he is who he is and I am in him. He gives me my identity in this journey through the creed. Right? Then comes, now that I've introduced you to Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. This is how you can connect to him. This is how you can talk to him. This is how you can, uh, live in loving relationship with him. This is how, uh, this is how he designs for you to find him where he locates himself. In prayer. In the sacrament of Holy Baptists. What is that? What is a sacrament? If you're going to talk, I need to give you this because people online, hello. Hello, hello. Uh, people online can't hear anything and I just stand there looking. And it's not the best TV. It's not good. So anybody wanted, what was my question? Huh? What is a sacrament? What? It is a what? It is a sacred thing. It's a holy thing, right? A holy thing, yes? I don't, I have this on already, I don't need this. Kevin, would you give me a favor and run this around the room? Thanks. So what else comes to mind? Uh, raise your hand if you have an answer. What else comes to mind when it comes to the definition of the word sacrament? First of all, you won't find it in the Bible anywhere. Right? Yes.
Oh, it's a sacred act that's connected to God's word in some way, either through an element like bread or water. I'm trying to think what the other sacraments are.
Water.
Wine, yeah, right. But it's connected to, um, a thing that we can do or touch or consume.
Perfect. What is the it that is connected to bread, water, wine? God's word, specifically, specifically the gospel. Right? The gifts that he bought for you by his life, his death, and his resurrection are connected. It is, look, Jesus died on the cross over 2,000 years ago on the other side of the world. Yes? How does his, John 3:16 says, for God so loved the world that he gave? Yes? How does God's love for the whole world travel through the years? The other side of the world? And locate itself and make itself available one-on-one to you? Here's something I want you to know and understand. Because we put so much stock in baptism, we aren't saying that there's a new way. What we're saying is that God's love for the whole world in Christ Jesus, over 2,000 years ago on the other side of the world, travels and locates itself in the room. And locates itself to a baptized man of God or a woman of God in a moment. So that he makes the gifts that he bought for you over 2,000 years ago on the other side of the world. He uses baptism as a means to get his gifts connected to you person. Make sense? He does that, what? You were going to talk?
Do you want me to give him the confirmation answer?
Sure.
Go ahead. A sacred or holy act, that's part one. Instituted and/or commanded by God or by Christ that connects something visible or to something that is invisible by means of the Holy Spirit and the word of God and gives forgiveness of sins.
Praise God. Thank you. Oh, you, you're not done. Um, so, I think we're starting like a lore line hearty thing here. I'm not sure what's, I'm not sure, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what's happening. And so, um, one of the things that's awesome about our God, and the whole time I've been with you, we've talked about this, is that he surrounds you and he locates himself in very specific places for you to be able to experience, grab on to, and have access to him. Um, and so he locates himself in very specific places in order to give you a means for the relationship, for the love, for the gifting, for the forgiving, the abundant life and the salvation that he has bought for you. Baptism and the Lord's supper are two of those places. Baptism and the Lord's supper are two of those places. There is this visible element of a water. Now, it's just water. There's nothing holy about the water. It's just water. We get it out of the sink in the back. There's nothing holy about the water. The power is not in the water. The power is not in the bread and the wine. The power is that the Holy Spirit connects the gifts through the word to a visible element. The power is always, the power agent is always the Holy Spirit connecting the gifts of God for the people of God to something very, very normal and mundane. Water, unleavened bread, wine. And so we don't, we, we don't worry so much about the water. We worry about the Holy Spirit working through the word. And I'm sorry, that's a bad word. We don't worry about it. We give thanks to God for it and we know that he locates himself in those places for us to do what he said he would do. Get his forgiveness, his abundant life and salvation into your life and strengthen you along the way. So, so in this journey through the table of contents for you, why does Luther do this in this order? Part of it is that he wants to introduce you to your brokenness and your need so that he can then get you on your knees so that he can introduce you to the God of your salvation. Father who created you, son who redeemed you, and the Holy Spirit who gets you in on grows you in this one true faith. And then he can teach you how to have a relationship. And how to, and how to, and how he comes to you and where he locates himself. And how to do these things in those places like prayer and what impact does your one-time baptism have for you every day? What, how does God, how does God meet you? I love this image. Um, when I was a, when I was a kid, my mom and dad, um, on the speak side of the family, my grandma and grandpa were farmers and it was really, really important to my grandma and grandpa and everybody was scared of them. Um, and, uh, that there would be, uh, uh, I don't remember. I may have romanticized this. Either a weekly or a monthly family reunion on Sunday afternoons where everybody, and my dad was one of 11 kids. Um, and all of the kids, all of the grandkids, uh, were expected to be out of grandma and grandpa's house. Expected to be out of grandpa and grandma's house. I don't care what you've got going on. There's a sacred, holy moment out here for the family. If you're not here, grandma will literally say, well, then you're not part of the family. Wow. Okay. Um, and so we would gather. And it was out on a farm outside of our small town, outside of Loamni, Illinois. And we would gather out there and all the kids, like 30 of us, would be out in the hay mow, running around, beating on each other, digging holes and killing rats and, and, and really, really doing, uh, really mean things to girls and stuff like that. But, um, we were there. And then there would be this, uh, and then from what I understand, there would be, uh, the guys who would be on the back porch. The barn is over here, the house is here, and the back porch is on this side of the house so that they couldn't hear or see the kids. And they'd be smoking cigars or smoking pipes and they'd be telling stories and they'd be lying and, and they'd be doing all kinds of stuff out here. And the women would be having their fellowship in the kitchen and the dining room and around the house and they would be doing what they were doing. And then they would have the meal ready and they would, uh, grandma was the only one who could do it. She would go out and ring the dinner bell and yell for us. And I was the best athlete in the family. And so I would always get there first. Um, and, uh, and she would then say to us, you gotta wash up. Uh, you gotta wash up. And then my uncle would come with the hose. Right? And he would wash us. And then, and then we would go in and the kids ate first. The kids ate first, or so I thought. The kids ate first, that's what I thought. But really, the men were already full and they were back out there and they were telling stories. Um, and, and then the women ate last after they had all the kids taken care of. And now, and now with that image in mind, I, I believe that every week that we have holy communion. That's exactly what's happening. It's exactly what's happened. Almighty God, the Father is calling the family to the weekly family reunion. And he's saying to you, if you want to continue to be a part of the family, you be there. Cause he loves us and he wants us to be together. And he knows what's been going on in your life and the Lord knows you need to be there. Cause of the gifts that he's going to give you that can wash you clean and give you strength. Baptism is the sacrament that God established in order to give us entry into the family, give us identity and belonging and purpose. And then, and then the Lord's supper is the sacrament that he gave us so that he could meet with us on a weekly basis and keep us strong and clean us up and hear the stories and love on us and, and then send us back out again. So in this loving relationship, Luther puts these things in place in this order so that he can teach you who he is, how to talk to him, and how to receive the, the blessings of belonging in the family. And then how to, how to on a weekly basis, receive the strength in the midst of the journey that is before us and be gathered together for the journey ahead. And then, because he knows who we are, the very next thing that Luther says is, okay, in this journey, when you all get together and in this journey where you remember where you are, you got to examine yourself. You got to know these things. And so I want to teach you how to, I want to teach you about confession. I want to teach you about confession. Come and clean between you and Almighty God. Come and clean, uh, in your own head and heart and stop rationalizing the fact that it's somebody else's fault or you're the victim or whatever, whatever it is. Come, come clean before him. Come clean before the person whose reputation you've hurt. Come clean before the person that you've sinned against. Uh, come clean and your pastors are here to help you with that if you need us. Uh, but you can go directly to the Father. You can go directly to the Father through his son, Jesus, for this. You don't need us, but we are here if you, if you, if we can help you in confession and absolution through that. And so, and so then, teaching us how to examine himself, he then gives to us the gifts that strengthen us along the way. That I believe, that is why Luther put the order of what he was going to do with these six chief parts in the order that he placed them. So, he wanted to first show you your sin, then show you your need for your Savior, then show you your Savior, show you your, your Creator, Redeemer, Sanctifier. Show you now, how do you do life together with them? How do you do life together with him? Between now and the day that he gets us home? Question, thoughts? Make sense? Awesome. Okay, so we are then ready. We are then ready to dive into the creed. When you think about the fact that you are a part of a creedal church, what does that mean for you? What does it mean to you that you are a part of a church that every Sunday says one of three creeds? Can you name the three creeds? Somebody give me one. Apostles Creed. Man, we've, we've, uh, since I've been here with you all, we've, uh, we've, uh, fallen into a rut of doing the Apostles Creed a lot. Um, and, uh, uh, the pattern in among the people of God, uh, back when we were doing page five and 15. Remember that? Um, is that when you, when you did page five is when you did Apostles Creed. And when you did page 15, you did Nicene Creed, right? And so in that way, because you had communion once a month, once a month you would, you would, uh, or you had communion every other week or whatever it was for you, once a quarter. Any of you remember anything less often than that? Once a quarter, you remember? In that, in that journey together, we would, uh, we would gather together and we would, uh, have that pattern about it. And, and I know, maybe it's just me, but once you walk over a line and you start saying, I'm going to have communion every Sunday, every service. There are a bunch of other decisions that have to be made about your pattern and your sequence and your thoughts around, uh, doing life, your worship life, the way that you do it. If you're going to give yourself to that pattern every Sunday, every service, it becomes really, really difficult to do everything else. Um, and, and so we, uh, I struggle with it here greatly. Um, just know that. That we don't have, notice that, were any of you in the 8:30 service this morning? It's a perfect example. All we did was the liturgy of the church. That's all we did. Um, and it was, it was the period of time that it's going to take in order to do the liturgy that's assigned for, out of the hemal for that service. And if we do that, the pattern of who we are uh, would, would have been perfect if we could have stopped the worship service or ended the worship service before we did communion. It would have been right out an hour. But because we still had communion, it took what it took. And 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 so we we come to this place where when you're, when you're working on all of these things and you're trying to mine your way through all of the things that we need to do and all of the things, if you're gonna turn around decline in this place, you have to have time to talk about it. If you're gonna turn around and you're gonna build up the worship life beyond what it is right now, you have to have time to do it. And 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 so we, I've been talking to elders and praying about how do you, how do you do this? How do, how do you do this in an hour? How do you do this? Because for you who are in this room, an hour may not be a big deal. But for the next generation and for people on the outside looking in, that we want to come and be with us, it's a big deal. It's a big deal. And so when you, when you think about the idea of the creeds, all I did was ask you a question and I went way down that rabbit hole. The question was, what are the three creeds? You gave me one of them. Apostle, the other one? Nicene and what's the third one? Athanasian, you really are Luther, you people. And when do you say the Athanasian Creed? Once, I heard once a year over here, on what Sunday? It is on Trinity Sunday, praise God. Raji, you got it, sister. That's right, so. Why and what is the benefit of being a creedal church? Say that again? It says succinctly what we believe in or who we believe in, right? Father who created us, Son who redeemed us, Holy Spirit who grows us in the one true faith, right? So what's so powerful about saying, why, why don't we say we? We believe in God, the Father Almighty, Maker of heaven and earth. Why do we all together say aye? You can't speak for one another, okay? It's a, it's a personal thing, what else comes to mind? It's an affirmation that all of us together, all of us together have our hope, our individual hope in this one true God. And the other thing that's powerful about being a creedal church is that it connects you to brothers and sisters in Christ across denominational lines around the world throughout time. And there is power in that connection. There's power, you are part of a rich, you're not in this alone. You're not in this alone, that we are together, we are together a part of a, of a great train of believers in Christ who have taken their stand. And it connects us to both those who have come way before us, those who are with us now around the world and connects us to those who will be with us all the way to the point where we get home and meet him face to face. There is power in it and grounding in it. Also, I would say to you that there's also power and the creed acts like an anchor in the storm, in the boat of your life. That, that as everything around you in a culture that says that, that truth it has, there's nothing ultimate when it comes to truth anymore, the culture would, would say. For us, for us, we believe that this is a grounding and a founding statement that says no matter what craziness the world comes up with, we take our stand here. Us and our God, Father, Son and Holy Spirit and what we say about him and what we say about us and what we say about all of us together. Anything else come to mind? Yes.
One of the things that that comes to mind also is this idea of it is an individual, personal relationship with God. There's a lot of people, it's like, I, I want my kids to be a part of the church, but they're not part of the church. But because you are, there's this idea out in society that they're connected to the church. That they're connected to Christ through you, that doesn't happen.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Yes, up. Watch you run across the screen.
Yeah, goodness for day. Truth in packaging for those that might consider joining and connecting.
Well, that was a long way to go for that, wasn't it? So say more about that, Bob, give me, give me that back. So what exactly are you talking about, good sir?
I think when we all proclaim the same thing and someone's considering joining the group or there, there's something appealing about the nature of the Christian that they've discovered or observed. Then now they know specifically what we stand for before making that step forward to join the group, to become a Christian.
Awesome, awesome, thank you, thank you. So when you say join the group, you're talking membership, right? You say, if I'm on the outside looking in and I say, I want to join the group, you're saying I want to become a member. Can you find that in the Bible anywhere? Wow, look at you, you've studied that. One of the best things that I can say about hanging on to the tradition of membership is that the Bible definitely talks about strangers and aliens and then talks about the family of God, right? That those on the outside come in and we treat them as family. And so there is this, there is this, I take my stand with you benefit of saying of picturing membership as just that, of people saying, you know what, Trinity? All of us together, I want this to be my worship home and you to be my brothers and sisters in Christ. And for us to take this stand together and for us to go on this ministry journey together, this mission journey together and I am in to walk alongside you. There's power in, there's power in that. There's power in that aspect of membership, right? Do you agree with that? There's power in taking your stand together and saying, I want to be with you. And other than that, what benefit does membership have at Trinity? So for example, if you're a member, you can do this, but you can't do this if you're not a member. What, what is that? Yes, Jeff. Vote. Awesome. Yes, you're exactly right, what else? Anything else? No. Um, you, do we have? Do, yeah, no, I'm not looking at her. You, do we have? And then I'll come back to her, do, do we have? I think one of the things that we would probably say together is that you can't be on the church council or the elders if you're not a member.
Yeah.
Would you? Yeah, is that in there somewhere?
Yeah.
All right, elected leadership, which for some people, voting and serving on boards may be a reason not to be a member. So, yes, what were you gonna say?
I was gonna say lots of people think you can't get married here if you're not a member, you can't get buried here if you're not a member. And that's not true and some churches, they won't do it if you're not a member.
Yeah, whenever you, whenever. I was the pastor of a large congregation and one of the things that happened is that I realized in, in a period of tight finances, I realized we were in that church paying two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year for, to the district and the senate for the, what's called the assessment. And the assessment is that per communicant member, you pay so much in order for the district to fund its conferences and those kinds of things, okay? And I was really, really, we were really, really tight at that particular time and so I made a decision. I made a decision that I said to my, I had secretaries. I had staff and so I can make this decision, have other people work on it. I don't have that here, so don't get any big ideas when I say that. But I, I, I said to them, I need to know the number of people who have been with us at least one time in the last year. Just one time in worship, just one time. And that number came in and in that day, I said to us and to the world around us, my communicant membership has now gone from thirteen thousand to eighty-seven hundred in one day. In one day. And and so it saved us probably about eighty-five thousand dollars. And giving to, and and the other thing that was there, I did the same thing. So that same, that same thing was about, there was an association of churches that supported three high schools in Milwaukee, I mean, was, still is. And and the congregation that I served gave about seventy percent of the funds to, from the churches to, to do that. And it was based on how many communicant members you had, what you were charged, right? But yet at the same time, when we got together, just like all the rest of them, I had one vote. Right, I had one vote, so. So my vote was to change the number of communicant members I had. And then when you do that, you have all kinds of people, Raji, who come and they want to know, can I still get married here? Can I still be buried here? They didn't want to join us and and worship with us and be in the word with us. They wanted to know, when I and my family die, will you still bury us? They wanted to know if I have my, my grandkids, will you still do the work? Will you baptize? Will you marry? Will you bury? If, if that can happen, I don't care if you, what you do with my membership. Right, we put them on an inactive list and if they ever came back, we were blessed and we would rock them back into membership, but membership membership for some things is goes too far. It becomes a part of a club where you have to pay your dues and you have to jump through some earthly hoops in order to have some privileges. And 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 so it's more powerful for us to think about, membership meaning we love the Lord our God together. And I want to take my stand with you. And I want you to be my brothers and sisters in Christ. And I want to go on this journey together. And and let all of the dead things about that kind of fade away. Questions? So the idea of being a creedal church and thinking about membership means that when I say to you, we take our stand together, one of the key ways that it shows itself is every Saturday, every Sunday morning, when we stand up together and we all together say, I believe. Right, I believe. It is powerful. It is powerful to be a part of the whole church moving through time in relationship to our God. All right. The creed. When it comes to our God, where can you learn about our God? Where can you learn about our God? In the Bible, where else? Where? The sermon, praise God, which is supposed to be in the Word of God applied, right? Where else can you learn about our God? Well, somebody said something. Nature, how is it that you can learn about God in nature? So he, so he's the Creator, the artist, the, the designer, the prime mover and prime force that began it all, that holds it all together, that designs it. You can see it in, I'll, I'll give you two, sunrise, sunset. How else can you see the beauty of creation? Introduce you to the majesty of Almighty God. What? Through your parents. Okay, okay, how can you know about God? How can you know about God because your parents model him for you and they introduce you to the word of God, right? Okay. So in creation, how can you, how can you know about God in the beauty of his creation? What else, where else do you see his handiwork? In the power of storms, awesome. The growth of plants. That's, that's something I've never really appreciated. I'm glad you're here, Nadia, I never would have come up with that one, the growth of plants, right? I'm such a dude. I know, I know. I know. I know. Most of the plants that I was around when I was a kid were cornfields where I was detasseling or I was cutting weeds out of beans. And the awe of the beauty of creation was pretty far away from my thought project. Yes. What other parts of creation can you see the beauty and the grandeur of God and know God as Creator? Birth of a baby, birth of a baby, I the intricacy and the organization of the human body from head to toe, that and so we were in our hometown, going to our home church and we were trying to figure out, dear God, what do you want, what do you want me to do with my life? Ever been there? What, what do you want me to do with my life? And it was through a series of things that God showed me. I want you to serve me with my whole, with your whole life. And one of those things, one of those things was watching my oldest son, Aaron, being born. Right, the awe and the majesty and the power and the messiness and the blood and the guts of all that. Only God, only God. And 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 so what else comes to mind for you? When it comes to the beauty of creation, what do you? Yes.
One of the things that really impresses me are photos that come from the James Webb Space Telescope. I mean, that thing shows galaxies, distant galaxies that are hundreds of light years across and our God created that. And it, to me, that points to God, nothing like that could exist without God having created it.
Yeah.
And the miracle of all that is also reflected in the intricacies of the atom. The things that exist in the atom are kind of a reflection of what's out there in space, it's just profound.
Awesome, thank you. there's a question here that I want to get to when you think about the creed and when you think about the revelation of Almighty God through the power of nature it introduces you to the existence of Almighty God but it does not introduce you to the power and the majesty of the Trinity it is alone and only through the word of God that he reveals himself this God Father who created us son who redeemed us Holy Spirit who gets us in on and keeps us in on the one true faith and so it's it's kind of like um this question here just caught my eye and um then why do we need the Bible or a summary of the Bible as such as the creed? All and although creation gives witness to its creator it does not reveal his identity and his name in some ways creation gives us the first chapter of the story the Bible and its summary in the creed gives us all Harvey the rest of the story the Bible teaches us to know God more fully and for our salvation Trinity what's the word mean? Three in one Trinity uh means three in one um the word Trinity isn't used in the Bible anywhere y'all know that right? The word Trinity is not used in the Bible anywhere but can you see the three people of the persons of the Trinity in the Bible all together in the same place at the same time anywhere in the Bible? So we have one the creation story the baptism of Jesus what else? Transfiguration awesome awesome and there are several other places along the way where the authors where the authors like Paul says uh Paul talks about uh the Trinity and some of the things that he says and the way that he says it and the way that he connects them together um so um the Trinity open your Bibles if you would to Genesis chapter one verse one so where do you see the Trinity in Genesis verses one through three? Where do you see the Father? In what words? And God said right and God said in the beginning God created um where do you see the Holy Spirit? What's he doing? What does that mean? Hanging out what's what's that mean? Given design tips that's what I think he was doing um given counsel right given counsel and and then where is Jesus in those three verses Jesus is wrapped up in the word said and the Father said and the word went out to create that for which it was sent and John one fourteen then says that word became flesh and made his dwelling among us and so that's just one of the places where the Trinity shows itself uh for us as as we go from cover to cover in the Bible you can see him all over all over the plate let's pray dear Lord God heavenly Father I ask you that you would be with us pour your grace out upon us and as we dive into who you are Father Son and Holy Spirit grow us in this most holy faith and this loving relationship and allow us the joy that comes from you taking us to where we are to where you would have us be just one on one between each one of us in in you but also all of us together as the family of God at Trinity in your name we pray amen thanks you guys